We call to order the regular meeting of the Burwick Planning Board for Thursday, August 1st. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have with us tonight Member Sean Winston to my left and to my right, Nicole Fecto and Michael LaRue. Our first order of business will be public comment. Anybody have anything to do with the planning board work or just good news in general will always be appreciated?
A lot about good news in general, but a lot of people accuse me of being a bearer of bad news, but...
Here's your chance to redeem yourself.
It's a public service announcements. First again is to plug the comprehensive plan as we mentioned this last meeting and we're going to be mentioning it again and again. We're still looking for volunteers to help us fill out the committee. When we work with James, he has a steering committee more or less in place. I know that we're looking to start meeting in the next couple of weeks and to get things going. Again, you know, no matter what your interest is, if you're interested in the future of Burwick, come and participate, you know, whether it's cultural heritage or the environment or the development, we can find a place to use your expertise. And even if you don't have any expertise, we can use your general knowledge. This is something that we want everybody in Burwick to be involved in. So if anybody's interested, contact the planning office and James Belissimo. The second announcement is this Saturday, I was told I could hold a prop up, is we're having first of our music festivals. This Saturday from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's open to the public. Come down, enjoy yourself. There's going to be plenty of good music, good times from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And we're having another one on August 24th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And one other note, we have a vacancy on the planning board. So for all of you at home who know you could do a better job if you were just here than we're doing, here's your chance. Contact James and you'll be able to tell us how to do it right. Our next order of business will be approval of the minutes from the July 18th meeting.
I didn't find anything. I was not here that night. They don't find any mistakes in them as written. Nice job, James.
Yes, I also commend James and I move that we approve the minutes from Thursday, July 18th as written.
I'll second.
We take the vote. All in favor? Thank you. All right. Our next order will be a public hearing for the conditional use application for sawmill and professional office, 537 Portland Street, Dusset Excavation, Dusset Forest Street. Do we have any members of the public here to comment? Okay. We will close the public hearing. We'll now consider the application of Dusset Forestry for a sawmill and professional office 537 Portland Street. Mr. Town Planner?
Yes, well, I don't have anything new to add. You have my memo from the last meeting, except that you have had deliberations and discussions regarding the sawmill versus solid waste and you made a determination from a land use standpoint that it is a sawmill, which I'm fine with. So beyond that, I think that if you have any questions of the applicant at this point, that's where I would head and I'd be happy to assist you in any issues that they have.
Could the applicant come forward?
My name is Brian Nielsen of Atter Engineering representing Travis Dusset of Dusset Forestry Products.
I think it would be helpful at this point, whether you or Travis Dusset, to explain in some detail the nature of the operation that's going to take place out on 537 Portland Street.
Sure, Travis. I'll do a better job than me.
Might be better for Mr. Dusset?
I'll set up the plan. Hi, my name's Travis Dusset. Nice to see you guys again.
Look under tab like four.
So basically, like I said before...
At the bottom, at the back of it, it's stuck there.
I collect trees from different various tree companies that cut them down in people's yards or wherever and I bring them back. I cut them to length. The good ones get sawn on a sawmill and the rest of whatever is left over, the piece or whatever, is either turned into firewood or grinded into mulch on site and I'd like to sell it at the property.
And you're currently doing this?
I am.
And what's the location where you're currently doing this?
It's across the street behind Mix.
All right, on Portland Road?
Yeah, directly across the street.
Okay. And the number of employees you expect?
Well, there'll be, there's going to be five to six total.
And that would be one person in your office?
There should, yes.
And that person will be selling material or will there be other people selling the material?
Well, there's always going to be two people there working. And so there'll probably be a girl in the office, you know, for bookkeeping and such. And then when somebody comes in that wants something, they'll have to be loaded with a machine, a loader or something like that. So we'll have, you know, a guy, you know, a man there who's already working that can load them and then, you know, the girl in the office will do the billing.
And how far from the office building do you expect the sawmill to be?
Well, the office is going to be attached to the shop where we showed you and the sawmill is going to be out back. So we didn't walk down that way, but it's going to be a little way, it'll be a ways.
Fifty yards, 100 yards, I mean roughly?
Yeah, probably 50 yards at least.
And will you have people at the sawmill and the grinding operation also?
Yes.
All right, so that would be the other two or three people who might be there?
Yes.
And your hours of operation?
Six to five in the morning during Monday to Saturday.
Okay. Any other questions?
Possibly open in the morning on a Sunday. It's tough to get people to work on a Sunday, but...
I hope business is good and...
During the Memorial Days and things like that when people want lome and mulch, you know, things like that. And that's another thing, it stump is part of the tree. So when I go pick up logs, a lot of times to get the logs, I have to take the whole tree, which includes the stump a lot of the time. So we bring that back, that gets processed, it gets sheared up, that gets grinded and then the stuff that falls off the dirt, you know, that will get piled for a season and then we sift that out for screen lome and things like that, which we'll also sell on site.
Michael, any questions? Nicole, anything?
No, I don't, I don't think I have any questions. We don't have any findings of fact or conditions preliminary.
What I'm going to suggest we do is that we vote on, to approve the application...
It's already been approved.
No, not as complete to actually approve it.
Oh, oh, approve it.
And then, and then the next time we can actually vote on findings and conclusions and conditions.
Will there be another meeting?
There's going to have to be because we don't have findings of fact or conditions.
Well, I don't know if you need to be at the next meeting. We will get the material to you.
Well, I get the, because I can't extend my closing date.
Well, what we will do tonight is vote on whether or not to approve your overall application.
Okay.
Depending on that vote, you will have your answer as to yes or no.
So...
The next thing we have to do is just in the nature sort of of housekeeping, meaning there's some additional documents we have to take a look at. But the overall question as to whether or not we will approve this, we will decide momentarily.
So say it's approval, I have like a piece of paper to show a bank.
Not tonight, but...
That's where the findings of fact will come into play and that's going to be at the next meeting. I can draft them up tomorrow morning and I can get them to James, but that means actually Niles will have to come into the office to sign them if he wanted, if he felt comfortable with that, if this board felt comfortable with it. Pretty straightforward.
There's no waivers being requested, right?
I'm sorry?
No waivers?
Nope.
Okay.
So, I mean, I can have those by mid-morning, tomorrow morning.
Which is what, which is the P...
Yes.
That's all I need because as long as, my only problem is I just, I feel like they won't give me an extension because there's a couple other people that have...
They always want you to feel that.
Offers, well, I know.
That's good. That means they're a good role stake.
I spent a lot of money to have the engineer and so if all they have to say is no and then they can take a cash offer.
Yeah. Those people still have to come to the planning board too.
Well, in addition to everything else, you're getting some real estate sales tips tonight also.
Just touch base with James mid-morning. Give me time to get those wrapped up, which should not take me long, but...
Okay.
Yep.
All right, okay. Well, I mean, the closing date is August 15, but that's when...
No, seems pretty straightforward.
So that's my dilemma.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the conditional use application for a sawmill and professional office at 537 Portland Street, Portland Street or Road?
Road.
Road.
Or street.
Either one, take your pick.
City to highway.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? No, thank you. You're done, you're approved. So check with James tomorrow morning, define mid-morning, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock?
Yeah, 10 o'clock.
Check with him at 10. And I will be down there at 10 to sign them.
I'm usually in my office at 7:30 and that's the first thing I'll work on.
All right, I will be down there at 10 tomorrow to sign them and he can come up. All right, I'm going to suggest that we reverse the order of our new business items.
I agree.
Because I'm going to assume that the conditional use application for Four Corners Clean will take significantly less time than the one for the fire station.
Sure, this is their initial meeting. And also I did, I...
Well, I'm going to make a suggestion and then I need to ask a few questions of the applicants.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself for this.
Okay.
We have a double conflict of interest.
A double?
Double!
We don't get those often. First, I'm going to suggest that email of the proposal says home business office. Technically, it doesn't meet the definition, so I think it's probably closer to a professional office or something, you know, what do they call it, back operations office? It's not going to make an enormous difference, not going to make any difference at all, but just technically you don't, a home business office means you've actually got to live in the building and you're not doing that. So a small little, not a problem. But there are a couple of questions that you did not, I guess three or four that you did not answer. So let me go through them with you. Yes, sir.
Can you have respect to the podium, please, to answer the questions?
Why not? Come say hello to Burwick.
Well, we're on TV, so everybody at home wants to hear it too.
Yeah, but you know, I've just been reading about FDR. Those radio chats work really well too, so sometimes voice is just enough. But let us go for the video age. Your name, please?
It's Diane Dyer.
And you are the applicant for Four Corners Clean?
Correct.
Tell us what you're going to do at the site?
Well, it's going to be, I house my business in my home previous, right now, and I would like to move it next door. We just purchased that building next door to, you know, get it out of my home and to have an office there.
Right, so you're not going to change the building, you're not adding or taking anything down?
Absolutely not.
It's going to be essentially the same building it is. I assume you're going to extend the driveway a little bit?
Yes.
All right, but essentially it's the same pretty much operation?
Correct.
There's some questions here that have to do with waivers. I'd like to just go over them and then I'm going to move that, to the extent that there are waiver requests that we, can we vote on them tonight?
Certainly, if you feel comfortable doing that, absolutely.
I'm going to suggest that we vote on those waiver requests. So the first one is, one of the requirements is that you have a topography indicating contours at intervals of not more than two feet in elevation unless otherwise specified by the planning board. I'm going to, I'm going to guess that you'd like to have us waive that requirement. Am I right? Yes, I am, am I not?
Yes, you are.
I thought you might agree with me.
Yes.
You know, as you said, it's exactly the same building, there are no changes, there's no reason to go through all of that. At this time, I would entertain a motion that we grant the waiver request on the topography indicators. Anybody?
I'll move that we grant the waiver for the topography.
All in favor? All right. The next one is onsite soil investigation, which meets all requirements of the land use ordinance. I'm going to suggest you'd like us also to waive that requirement?
Yes.
I thought you might be good. Can I get a motion to grant that waiver?
I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor? And the, the next is a landscape plan showing location type and approximate size of plantings and location and dimensions of all fencing and screening. I will also entertain a motion that we waive that requirement since it's an existing building. It's presently a residential building, as I understand?
I'm, pardon?
Is it a residential, do people live in the duplex?
There's nobody living there. It's not a rental unit whatsoever.
It's never been?
It has been.
It has been. When was the last time it was lived in, do you know roughly?
A couple of weeks ago.
All right, so recently. Okay, all right, good. Again, I will entertain a motion that we grant that.
I'll make, I'll move that we grant the waiver for the required landscape plan. I'll second.
All in favor? And finally, other stuff that we're supposed to ask you for, that we really don't need to ask you for, we'll entertain a motion to grant materials to satisfy section 9.1.1 as they apply.
I'll make a motion for that. Second.
All in favor? All right, so we're now at the point when we can entertain a motion to call this application complete?
That is correct.
Do I have such a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to consider the application for Four Corners Clean on Route 236 as complete.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, now what do we do?
Set the date for a public hearing and a sit walk if you feel necessary to visit the site.
Probably worth taking a look, it'll be a nice sunny afternoon. Two weeks from today at 5:30. That work?
That works.
Including the recusers and the applicants?
I'm going to be there.
But with two weeks from tonight, August 15th at 5:30 at the site. All right, wonderful. Thank you. We're done with you.
Thank you.
For this evening. I'll even throw in one of those just for the same price.
He doesn't get to do this very often if you can tell.
All right, now let's get down to the next order of business. The fire station at 26 Wilson Street, conditional use application. This is the formal application. We've had an informal workshop on this subject some time ago. How do we want to proceed? Gentlemen, who wants to present on behalf of the conditional use application?
Can, we need, James, we need to have the screen brought down, I think.
Oh, boy.
As a presentation is going to be...
Are we going to have to move?
As I see.
Oh.
Let me move Paul.
See, I'm too short, I couldn't do that without standing on a chair, so.
I mean, is that the next step?
James, we don't have a power screen?
That's like an extra 400 bucks.
Disappointing.
How does it stay down? It doesn't feel like it's gonna.
It does, look at that.
Look at that.
It's hard to do. It's very hard to do.
I don't know if it'll...
I just have the magic touch tonight, James.
So you want to use this mic?
Okay.
Well, yeah, if you want to go over there.
I don't know if my mouse will, I think it gets a little bit too far.
Is that good?
Yep.
Beautiful, look at it.
Okay, great. All right. Have everything now. I'm Andy Highland at Port City Architecture and we have been hired along with Blaze Engineering, I have Todd Gammon with me, to design the new fire station for Burwick. So just, I think you, we've been through just kind of on some sketch plan review for you before, just getting you, just going through the basics here. This is the existing police station in town here and the field that's behind it. So the proposal and the voters when they voted for it last fall wanted it with the police station. So we took a look in and we're going to create a public safety complex. So this is down below us here is the kind of really public entrance to the police station. There's a residential building right behind it. What we like to do, so we took, we started to take a look at the site, we talked with the chief on where the calls come in and the calls go out. One of the pieces on this one was really getting out to Sullivan Street. So we took and we were going to enlarge the path, the walking path that was going through there that used to go to the school and have created, it's the apparatus drive. It's a long one too, 300 and some feet, maybe it's off my map right now. But that'll get, that gets out to Sullivan Street and then a small road back up to, I believe that's Kelly, is that right?
Logan.
Logan, I'm sorry. Street up in the back here. So these two avenues right here, this would be really kind of where the apparatus and fire and maybe future EMS vehicles travel in and out. Personnel would, would travel also maybe in this area. Then we have some parking for a call company back here and for staff. And then again, the public would just stay kind of on this side, so we'd have traffic segregated between public and private use. The front portion here is really administrative wing. There's a meeting room here that might also be able to be used by the town and also by the police department. One of the other pieces of this was turning the old gym, they wanted to turn that into a Sallyport, the police, so we're going to put a few end walls on that, create a trench drain in the middle of it and an oil-water separator and allow, that'll hold probably about six cruisers inside, keep them out of the weather. And so that's a part of the project as well. And so that's really kind of it in a nutshell as we kind of go around. There's your four large bays, double bays, they're drive-through. There's a little mezzanine on the top here. This is the floor plan of it. Again, front door, coming in lobby, administration, training room, another conference, these are offices. This is bunk rooms in the back and bathrooms. And as we go through, I mean, although there's a good call company here, the trend is becoming really professional staff. You know, people just aren't living and working in the same town as much as they used to. I think the average age of a volunteer is probably in their 50s or something right now, so. So we're kind of preparing the town for maybe it'd be some professional staff that could live and work here in the future. Other pieces of it are, this is the day room and eating and the kitchen and we have a little fitness area in the back. A big thing now in fire station design is really trying to keep the carcinogens and the contaminants out of the living areas. So we have a decontamination area too here that you would go in, you can kind of hose or shower off your turnout gear, kind of keep that clean, run it through the washer and so there's a nice separation that way. On the far side of the bays is really storage and this is some more lockers. The volunteers would come in this way, grab your gear and go out to the vehicles in the bays. So really that's kind of the, that's the, I guess, summary of the proposal. We also have put in for, our applications in for, in DEP. I think I probably can turn it over to Todd if he wanted to talk a little bit about the site and how we're planning to drain the site, et cetera, all that, all that good stuff. I'll be your...
Yeah, be the guy. Evening, Todd Gammon, Blaze Civil Engineers. So I think Andy covered kind of the site layout for the most part. Here's the site layout and utility plan, like he mentioned. It is probably almost 430 feet from the fire station down to Sullivan, so you've got a pretty good length. We've worked with CMP, the town sewer department and the Burwick Water Department. Our connections will come off a 12-inch main there. We've got domestic and fire protection for the building. We're going to tie into a sewer main out into Sullivan and key that up into the fire department. We've got some floor drains. I've worked with the peer review engineer for Burwick on the sewer and we're kind of final specking that, there's an oil-water separator that's going to, the drains will discharge, that little rectangle he's hovering over now that ties into the sewer. So we've done kind of some due diligence there and got sufficient capacity for all that. In our CMP meeting, working with an electrical engineer, we also are taking off the power pole on Sullivan. We're going to bring in a riser pole along our entrance drive and we've got three light poles along the entrance. We've got a couple up in the parking area and a couple, one out back and one kind of up towards the Logan exit. That's a, it's a drawing further down in the, in the set, but to give you an idea, we've got a dumpster pad out back. It's going to be a double dumpster, full fence enclosure and that will be, the police station staff will have the ability to use it as well, was the plan, so we're going to do a double, double sized one there.
Our transformer, right?
Yeah, we've got a transformer pad and a generator pad to the left of the parking. Going to have some bollard set up, but obviously whatever's sufficient to run that in the future. I think there's 26 parking spaces shown, cited on the layout right now, but as Andy mentioned, most of, if there's any public type meetings or whatnot, we've, there's still, there's quite a few parking spaces in front of the police station. I think the assumption is they're going to access the building from the front, park to the south. So the 26 to the north will be for staff and other gatherings. Obviously you can see, I left the outline of the Estherbrook School, it'll be demoed. You can kind of see in space where that is in comparison to our layout. Tried to limit the amount of impervious as much as we could. We've got a 20-foot entrance off Sullivan, 20... We've got a 20-foot entrance off Sullivan, 20, up to Logan. And then, as Andy mentioned, we've got a little drive coming around the police station that wraps into the Sallyport with a overhead door in and out and just doing a little bit of sidewalk work in the front, limiting that around the flagpole. A little bit of landscaping, showing some foundation plantings and a tree. There's a little bit of, there's a few deciduous tree, or coniferous trees out in front of the police station. Most of that is all developed land for the most part. There's very little wood clearing. Everything's mowed out there, as you probably know. So the best part about the footprint is there's as limited as impact as we could. We do have some wetland impacts. You can see the wetland symbol to the, to the left there near Sullivan. So as we're crossing, I am matching into the 10-foot wide path. So we're really only widening that 10 feet in that area. That was already a gravel path up through. And then even the building is on top of the park, the basketball court. And there's a lot of impervious out there. And then, of course, we're demoing a whole building and a roof. So there's a lot of compensation in terms of elimination of some impervious and creating what we need out here.
And that'll just be reseeded right there?
Yes, that's all going to be grass. Yep.
Even though nothing's shown there, it'll be, it's going to have to get graded.
Okay.
And so we're going to also try to use, that's good fill up there, to use that for the site itself as well.
Yeah, if you want to go to the next plan, Andy, I can, so here's the grading plan. You can see some of the proposed grades.
Oh, yeah.
So ideally, since the Esterbrook School was brought in, was built, it was built on some pretty good fill, fortunately. So we had quite a few test pits and borings done with a local geotechnical company, evaluated the report. There are some challenges to the site, but a lot of the fill is, my plan is to cut under the Esterbrook School, regrade that. We're going to actually make use of that fill. Because I have a fill slope coming in from Sullivan as we're accessing. Obviously, it's a little steeper up to Logan. So we're trying to balance the finished floor grade of the fire department with not too steep from Sullivan and, but high enough where it's, you know, challenging grades up top there. So what you're seeing to the south is an MDEP, Environmental Protection, underdrained soil filter. It's a dual filter. It's treating about 75% of the site. Everything gets there for majority of the impervious area. Surface swales and cross culverts come into some four bays. Essentially, what that is, is it's an underdrained, you get some perforated pipes, some storage capability in there. Outlet control structure slows the flow for the two-year, 10, 25, 100-year storm events. So we're restricting any peak rates below what is getting to that channel which gets to Wilson now. And...
Oops, sorry.
The, you know, obviously got a match out in front where the, we're connecting to the impervious of the parking for the police station and the walkways. But trying to limit, as I mentioned, the woods as best we can, the tree clearing and the wetlands. As Andy mentioned, we have four permits we're getting. Number one is a MDP stormwater permit, which is triggered for greater than one acre of impervious area. We're getting a MDEP Tier 1 NRPA wetlands disturbance permit. We have just over 10,000 square feet associated with the entrance drive just north and south of the path where the Sullivan entrance is. We have what's called a permit by rule, which is the proximity of the filter to the stream that's shown in kind of a darker width down to the south. Yeah, that. And we're also getting an Army Corps Category 2 permit, which is associated with wetlands and tree clearing and some of the standards by which, you know, the design was done for the drainage meets both MDP and Army Corps. Specifically where the stream is, that's a 42-inch culvert. It's embedded. Natural stream substrate is actually placed inside the culvert to mirror what would be done. Obviously, those culverts are replacing existing culverts. So it's fairly minor exercise because everything was prior disturbed.
So there is a culvert under there right now?
Yep, there's a culvert in the stream.
Somewhat clogged up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Actually, both places where you can see. There's also one at the entrance to the Sullivan. So there's three that cross the, three that cross the path right now. Yep. So I'm matching those locations. So obviously, we can't reroute the location of the stream, but keeping as much distance as we can and everything's really have, you know, surface whales circumnavigating the whole, the whole thing. So if you want to go to the, the next one's the electrical. Gives you a little, maybe a little harder to see, but, so there's three light poles, the entrance, a few up in the parking and then one behind the fire station and one up towards Logan. Also using, making use of wall packs on the building, obviously, but really limited nature for the size and scope of this for 10 acres. Yeah, Andy mentioned the police improvements and not sure what the next sheets were, Andy.
All right, yeah, so we're bringing in new fiber into the police station and going to reroute their electrical, which right now comes off the Esterbrook School. So we're going to bring that in from School Street.
Todd, you've got a schedule on there for the lighting. Have you got, I can't recall, did you provide a cut sheet or anything showing that they're full cutoffs or anything like that?
Yeah, I don't think Tim Matthews, the electrical engineer, did this. He's got a lot of detail. He's only provided that one plan, Andy.
Yeah.
He's got all the details of the ducts. We are using cutoff fixtures, standard ones, 20-foot poles.
Can we just get the detail on that so we have it in?
Yeah, we'll give you a cut sheet. Yep.
Real important lately around here.
Okay.
Dark sky.
Okay.
Feature cutoff.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to email it to me, that's fine.
Yeah, I can send you a PDF.
Anybody in the culvert? Details, manhole details, okay.
Yeah, I think that mostly covers it. Happy to take any questions.
A lot of details, yeah.
Mostly erosion control, pre-imposed, drainage, full drainage study was submitted. Report, hydrocat calculations. DEP was obviously a part of, part of all that.
Is there any sort of a signal down at Sullivan Street to indicate that the trucks are coming out?
We're, we're looking at a, so we were talking about it and we were running conduits down there, bringing power in, bringing lights down there. So what we're contemplating is at least a warning light down there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not thinking stoplight. I was just...
Right now, they have them for school crossings. There are a couple of things. So we're trying to maybe use those locations for traffic coming each way. And we've talked to the fire department, whether it was, you know, operated when a call comes in or they have, or maybe when the doors go up. So we're working on that. And that's anticipated that we would have that, some sort of warning light.
So when you were mentioning that, Andy, I mean, I'd suggest maybe looking at like the lights that are on, actuated on traffic signals. If you go to some of the cities, when there's an actuation and they freeze the lights in a certain position, the traffic lights, there's a red, little red light up on the pole, go a little flash as a visual. Look at that and maybe you can just pop that in a pole on either side of the entrance.
I believe there's a strobe on the truck that sets those off.
Yes, that's right. Either a strobe or there's some are buttons that are actuated.
I just know that traffic moves really fast on Sullivan Street, having lived there. And people are, seem to be in a hurry when they're going to Sullivan Street.
Especially at that little spot by the, by the, that bend there.
Yeah, that's after the stop, it's after the four-way stop and then people are starting to accelerate.
We absolutely have an opportunity to do. And we're, and we're talking with the fire department about how that might operate, so.
Yeah, since they are, like Andy mentioned, since they already have the pedestals for the, for the school flashers, we were looking to see if those are already wired and how that could interplay. And our electrical took a look at that.
I think that was pretty much, we have other...
Elevation plans.
Elevation plans, looking at a kind of hardy plank and brick on the building. So durable materials, flat roof throughout. The roof on the front will just be overbuilt truss to give it more of a village kind of character for the folks that are coming up to the building.
And for our village overlay.
Yes.
Design standards.
Yep. And we're trying to, we're putting in a little tower here to take the, there's a historic bell over by the, the existing station that we're going to relocate. Bring a piece of that here. All right. That's our dog and pony show.
Thank you. So Mr. Chairman, tonight you, I think my memo suggests you could find the application complete?
Well, the first problem is we can't find the application. It's not in the book.
I have the old stuff all right here.
There's an application from April.
I have an application.
Which did not appear to be complete in April. I don't see anything...
You mean as far as an actual checklist?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's hard to find it complete if I can't find it, essentially. So if it's there, we need to have it distributed to us. If not, it's going to be a little tough to find it complete if I can't see it.
I use, I usually use the ordinance, that's why I...
No, we're not that clever.
We use the checklist.
You know, and I'm a literal kind of guy. If I'm going to, if I'm going to vote on a motion to find an application complete, I got to see the application first.
That is clearly your choice, Mr. Chairman.
And it's a heck of a choice, is it not? So that's the choice I'm making and I'd like to actually see the application.
I think they submitted the application on the, yeah, that's it right there, yeah.
Yes, we submitted the application, the two-page with checklist.
On the first, with the first meeting.
I have it in here from April.
So that is the application that you were submitting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the site plan...
At least now we know what we can look at.
We have all the butters, I mean, if you look at the list, all those are on the survey. We had everything on the site plan.
Yeah, because we had requested the extra deed for the...
Do you have anything, I don't have a checklist on mine.
Well, I have the page two. I mean, I don't have any, yeah, I don't have anything.
I don't have any checklist.
Niles, the checklist came like a month ago. We changed the...
I understand that, but we're meeting tonight and we're being asked to vote on whether it's complete and I haven't seen it. All right, now...
I don't even have the other one.
Well, look under tab six is the old one, which is only, it's an unsigned...
Yeah, it is unsigned, you're right.
But there's no checklist on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's unsigned, there's nothing checked off or anything.
I'll be more than happy to call a recess and you can make copies and give it to us. But if you want us to vote on the completeness of this application, we're going to have to see it.
I don't even have the April one, so.
All right, well, here's the April one.
I do have the April one.
Well, we have some time to kill. Your decision on how you want to proceed, but...
So you want to see the, you want to see the actual checklist?
I guess I don't see it as my decision. You're the voting board, but...
Well, no, no, what I, what I've offered is to call a recess, to have copies of the application made and brought to us and then we'll be happy to look at it and vote.
Yeah, I can make copies right now.
But we're not going to vote without looking at it. I mean, that's not going to happen.
Okay. Call a recess. Well, that was what was submitted.
That's not an application.
Weird.
Yeah, like I've got this...
There's no checklist.
Signed it.
Yeah, so this, this is, this is the application.
That's your two-page application.
Right, this is the application.
Where's the checklist?
The checklist is more an administrative thing on my end that was implemented like a month ago.
Well, but the previous applicant, you included it.
Not his checklist, right.
Yes. And is there some reason why this one doesn't?
Because this was submitted before the application was changed. So, I mean, they, I mean, they submitted, there's no doubt that they submitted the required materials. They just don't have the, I mean, the checklist is just, you know, like I didn't, like, it's the same, I mean, the checklist is just a reformatted second page.
Well, we, we know that Nicole wants to know about low-impact design.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Somebody want to tell me about it? What did you consider, what are you doing?
It's on our checklist.
It's on the checklist, which we don't have. Because apparently...
It's part of the application.
Yeah, so if we look at that, originally in April and then the current one.
Yep.
You have all the butters, the site plan required, we have the elevation plan and the floor layout, parking areas, traffic circulation, lighting, landscaping is all in the plans. That's just part of the checklist.
I don't think I got a list, I don't have a list of butters with my, with my thing.
It's on the boundary survey.
Okay, but we need, like, a list of butters. List of butters. I get it, it is on, if you want to look around, but this is a list of butters.
Okay.
And that's typically what we receive is a list.
And then the written narrative, I don't know if you have the two, do you have the two-page letter that was submitted?
It went from April.
I do, yeah, we have the written...
Just outlining the whole project.
We do have the written narrative, yep.
Speaks to the, you know, the...
Yep, we have that.
And then obviously worked with the municipal and water and sewer have the capacity letter. RTI, do you have all the deeds that were submitted?
We did, yeah. And we even requested additional deeds, which we did receive. What we don't have is a written statement documenting proposed low-impact design. I know James had mentioned that the stormwater management, I guess, suffices that.
I was going to say, I submitted a 30-page stormwater management report. All that is covered in, in that, which you guys had copies of, so hopefully that...
That was, that was my, and actually, James and I talked about that. Typically, we get a low-impact design, like a written statement, it's part of our application. And I wasn't aware that the stormwater management takes, can take the place of that. But this is an unsigned application for the sake of that. And there is no list of butters.
Sorry.
That's expensive.
Better than a gavel.
Seriously. I'm about to grab the emergency bu... It's real quiet in here now. So save for a list of butters, I see, I think the application looks, the list of butters and a signature and a date, the application looks complete.
Would you care to make a motion to that affair?
I move that we find the application for the fire station to be located at 20 Wilson Street, complete.
You could go on to say that for the next meeting, that they provide the additional information that you...
Please do, please provide the list of butters for the next meeting.
Signed application.
And sign the application, yes.
And please provide the checklist for the next meeting.
James, so we can look at it.
Do we have a second on this motion?
I'll second.
All in favor? All opposed? All right, we next need to schedule a sit walk and a public hearing, also for the 15th?
Yeah, I've got, I mean, I've got questions about this, which I guess I can save for the next meeting. Or we can talk about it now so that maybe, because we talked about it at the last meeting and, and I don't see any change on the site plan at all. So I'm going to once again state that our comprehensive plan, which it is our job to, to make sure that anything that comes through here jives with our comprehensive plan. And the part of this plan which does not is the February 2014 addendum under open space and recreation, which says that to make the downtown pedestrian friendly by creating safe, continuous routes to, from and through downtown, where there is a picture of this in that space. And we talked about making sidewalk or pedestrian access along that corridor that's headed to Sullivan Street and up to Logan. And I've had a lot of, we discussed a little bit back and forth. Since then, I've spoken to Chief Rousell in South Berwick. I don't know if you're familiar with their fire location, but it's immediately downtown. It's connected to a community center. It is adjacent to an apartment building. There's a playground on the property. My son was just there two weeks ago, taking his driver's test in the parking lot for the fire station. So to say that it's not a pedestrian-friendly area is incorrect. And I talked to Chief Rousell, they've been there for 20 years, they've never had a problem. They want the public there. And I want them to want the public here. And the public wants to be here. We use that space. I walk there constantly and I always see people walking there. I was, and the argument was that, you know, we don't want pedestrians around there. The Berwick Fire Station right now is on our main drag, has a crosswalk that leads directly to it. Like, there's a crosswalk that goes right to the front of the fire station. So if we, if pedestrian access was that big of a problem, that wouldn't have been there. So those are kind of, that's kind of my thing because that's in our comprehensive plan and my... Um, so those are kind of, that, that's kind of my thing because that's in our comprehensive plan, and my job here is to make sure that our comprehensive plan matches with, with what's brought before us, and I don't see that. And I was really hoping to see that update in here, and when I opened up my folder this morning and saw that it wasn't in here, I was pretty disappointed. Because I feel like it wasn't taken.
There was an agreement that you would at least look at that and get back to us with an answer.
Yes.
Tom Wright, Chairman of Board of Selectmen. Um, yes, that was discussed, and yes, the comprehensive plan does say making access, but it does not specifically mention the Esterbrook School. It shows it on the map, yes. It says making connected areas around town, downtown. One of the suggestions the last time was that we put a sidewalk along that new access road, three, over three hundred feet of sidewalk. If I'm gonna be spending all that money to put sidewalks in, it's gonna be up Sullivan Street so we can get to other areas that need to be connected. That was our argument there.
I understand that's your argument. That's not with the comprehensive plan.
Nothing in this plan precludes us from doing that in the future. There's nothing in there that says that pedestrians are banned from there in the future. What we're looking at is putting this building in, in the most efficient way possible, and getting it in on the budget that we, uh, bound by. The town voted to put it there, and in politics, the last vote counts the most. And the people may have looked at the comprehensive plan and made that recommendations years ago, but the last vote that the Berwick public used was that we wanted to put the fire station there and make a public safety complex. As I said, there's nothing that precludes us from doing this in the future. We don't have the money or the time to include that in this proposal at this time.
Well, you don't have the time to include a trail through this property?
We don't have the time or the money. No, we don't.
You first came to us in April. By my calculation today is August. That's over three and a half months ago. You don't have the time to draw on a damn little piece of paper a trail that goes through this?
Niles, as you know.
James had, I, actually, we have, I mean, there is a proposed one. James sent it to me.
It is, as you know, Niles, putting a trail in more than just drawing a line on a damned piece of paper. You have to engineer it. You have to check with the DEP. You have to do all the same things that you would do. So, yeah, is, we're trying to get this building in on budget. Is, we have very limited funds on what we can do. Is, the town's position, the town's position is that we don't have the money in this budget to do that design at this time. There's nothing that precludes us from doing it in the future if the public wants to vote to appropriate that money. The money that was appropriated is to put a fire station in and create a public service complex.
So it's, it's the conclusion of the Board of Selectmen that the land use ordinance is merely guidance when it's convenient to be used?
Is, we're not going against the land use ordinance.
And the comprehensive plan equally just a guidance when convenient?
Is, all right, I can throw that right back at this board.
We're not throwing things. We're trying to find a solution. This isn't an argument.
Can we talk about, if we're gonna talk about these types of things, can we talk about developments in town and sidewalks? That's in our plan. That's in our ordinances. The apartment's on Old Pine Hill Road.
There's no sidewalk, the, we.
Where are the sidewalks?
If you look, you can look back, since you're so interested in this, and review and, and see why that waiver was granted, but here we have pedestrian access, and here, this part of the.
Pedestrian access on Old Pine Hill?
Right here, right, what we're talking about, right, no, no, we're, no, there is no pedestrian access there. There's no, there's no sidewalks there.
And if the town wants a waiver, then maybe it should request a waiver.
Request a waiver then.
You, you didn't request a waiver, which is why I would like to see the paperwork, but even I voted to find this complete. The problem is, we're either gonna get answers or we're not gonna get answers. Um, fine with me either way, but if you expect, if you expect the people of the town of Berwick to abide by the comprehensive plan and the land use ordinance, then maybe the Board of Selectmen need to do that also.
It is, and you're getting answers. You don't like the answers you're getting, but you're getting answers.
The answer I got was you didn't have enough time.
Time or money.
Now, what my question is, if we had enough money to put a Sally Port and an oil-water separator and all this to the police station, we're here looking at a fire station, so we added a lot of stuff to the police station.
No, the, the original vote was for both buildings. It was to build the fire station and renovate the police station.
Okay.
That was the original vote. That was explained ahead of time.
So it should say fire station and police station renovations on the application then, because it says fire station. Everything here says fire station, and if we have money to renovate Sally Port and do all that, then, um, it's confusing for, for just the fire station. It's confusing. It's confusing for me. It's confusing for other people.
Can you show me in the comprehensive plan where it says we need to put a trail through the Esterbrook property to get this fire station?
No, I can't, but I can say that it's make downtown pedestrian friendly, and it's the green spine. And listen, don't act like you've never heard this before. Furthermore, it's the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen and the town manager to make sure that happens. So it's, I don't know, unnerving when the Board of Selectmen and the town manager, I mean, granted, Steve hasn't gotten up, so I'm not gonna drag you in this. Um, by proxy, well, you've dragged yourself into it now, but, but it's your responsibility to make sure this happens, and you're standing here arguing against it, which is unnerving for me, because I voted for you people to represent me.
Selectmen have not been doing that would be a misnomer also, is, can we talk about expanding the pocket, the Salmon Falls? That Selectmen voted for that, put that. So we are doing that.
Can we talk about this here?
We talked about, you know, Penny Pond and improving that trail. The Selectmen approved that, so we are doing that.
Okay, can we talk about this here, though?
It's, I have been, but you keep.
I'm just saying that we, I mean, the town, the town, they sent out a vote, the town voted, we voted, I mean, this comprehensive plan addendum went in in twenty-fourteen, so it wasn't years and years and years ago. This is something that we've been working on diligently for years.
And I've been involved in that diligently.
People want pedestrian access. Find, find a cheap way to do it, or show us that you've looked at it. Show us that you've looked at it, for Christ's sake. Like, it's like, no, can't do it. Show us.
And, and, you know, to go back to your comment.
It's our money.
To your comment about speaking to the, the chief in South Berwick.
Yeah.
Is, the chief of police in Berwick, and the chief of police, uh, south, the fire chief in Berwick, both advise against it. So we're listening to our chiefs, not from another town.
Well, they advise, I have a feeling they advise against it because there's not enough money.
No, they think that it's a public safety hazard. That's what they think.
Well, then, they, they, they have a crosswalk that leads right into their, right into the doors of the fire station right now. It's never bothered anybody up till, up until now.
What's that?
You'll get us those statements before the next meeting?
Which statements?
From the fire chief and the police chief saying that they consider it unsafe?
Sure, no problem. I have it, I have it on an email already.
And somebody will amend the application so it no longer reads Berwick Fire Station and now reads whatever it is that it needs to read to include the police station? We'll also get that done before the next meeting?
Police, I mean, unless the police are expanding, it's renovations isn't like a conditional use application.
No, but I just think it should be clear on here what it is.
But, but the name of the project is clearly all of it. It's not, this is not a project just about the fire station, as we've just been told.
It was not, you've just been told. It's been from the very beginning. It has been.
You're gonna argue with me about whether you ought to change the name of the project to be.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying that.
Fight about every damn little detail to that point?
No, I'm not, I'm just saying that it has been presented to the public from the start as a new fire station and renovations to the police station.
That's fine, just write it on the application.
We have, we have found this to be a complete application. We're now in the process of deciding when to hold the public hearing, um, and the site walk.
So we have a site walk already on the fifteenth. We cannot have two sitewalks on the same day.
All right, so then, what would be the next meeting after that?
September.
The fifth of September?
I'm looking at James.
Yeah, September fifth is next Thursday.
Yeah, September fifth.
That's acceptable to all parties, September the fifth?
For a site walk.
For a site walk, five-thirty?
And a, and a public hearing after that.
After the site walk. Yes, no?
Why does it have to be the next meeting? Why can't it be on the fifteenth?
Because we already have a site walk on the fifteenth.
We already have a site walk on the fifteenth.
You can't meet, you do the site walk at the same time you have your regular meeting?
We, we have a site walk first, and then we go and have our meeting afterward, and a lot of us have jobs and are just volunteers here, so we can't.
We already have a meeting scheduled. If there are other items to discuss, that would be perfectly fine.
Yeah.
But we can't do a site walk that night also, because we're already doing another site walk.
We could have the public hearing on the fifteenth.
We could have a public hearing on the fifteenth. We just can't have the site walk, which means we can't have a final vote until we have a site walk. All right?
That's your call.
All right, that's my call.
Yeah.
Public hearing on July the fifteenth, I mean, excuse me, August the fifteenth, site walk on September fifth, and the earliest we would then be able to consider a, a vote on the application would be August, would be September the fifth. All right? I'll entertain, oh, we have another public comment, period? Nobody? Um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move that we adjourn the Thursday, August first planning board meeting?
I'll second that motion. All in favor? Good night.